Audit workshop. I was looking for Ms. Rogers. I didn't know if she wanted to say anything, otherwise we'll just go ahead and turn it over to our friends from Hungerford Nichols to go ahead and walk us through the highlights of our audit. Trustees, you were just handed a hard copy. I know you had an electronic copy to review over the weekend. There's Ms. Rogers. Is there anything you wanted to say, Mrs. Rogers, to introduce, or would you like to go ahead and just turn it over to Adrienne from Hungerford Nichols?
Oh, yeah, you guys have met Adrienne before.
Okay. I know Adrienne is a very familiar face to all of us here. So Adrienne, welcome. We'll go ahead and turn it over to you to walk us through. Mrs. Rowe is gonna share the screen, I think, so we can follow along. And we'll get started.
Well, thank you for having me. Definitely, we're under different circumstances, but it's nice to still be able to see your faces and kind of gather, even if it's virtually, to go over the audit. I know it's probably everyone's favorite meeting of the year, but I will keep it fairly brief, and if anyone has any questions, I'm certainly happy to go into more detail about that. So before we get started, you should have received, at least electronically, I think the hard copies made it there today. You should have a paper copy of the financial statement, a copy of the financial, or federal audit, excuse me, a letter from us, which is probably in the back of, if you received it papers, in the back of the audit, and then an audit summary, which we're gonna go through here. We're just gonna kind of go through the audit summary. The purpose of the summary is, I know for a lot of people, reading 90 pages of a financial statement is a bit overwhelming. So I tried to compile it in a different way that may be a little bit more user-friendly for those that aren't used to looking at financial statements every day. So if you kind of want to turn to the first page there, we'll kind of go through some of this briefly. This is the statement of net position, and the first two statements of the financial statement are the statement of net position and the statement of activities. Those are different than what you're used to seeing, and those are a very long-term view of the district. So we're not gonna spend a ton of time kind of going through those, but just to let you know that those are in there. Want to encourage all of you to read the MDNA, which you will find in pages five through 12. At the bottom of that are kind of some MDNA highlights that we'll chat about pretty briefly. But the first thing that the board wants to know first and foremost is, did we get a, you know, a clean audit opinion? And Clarkston did receive an unmodified, the wording has changed over the last few years. But the district did receive an unmodified opinion on the audited financial statements, and that is the highest opinion that we as auditors can give. So first and foremost, that's kind of what we're looking for. We had no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the financial audit. We'll talk about the federal audit too, but there were no findings in the federal audit as well. So and we had no material journal entries. So that's helpful for you because you want to make sure that when people like me come in, I'm not changing the fund balance and the information that you guys are using to make budgetary and programmatic decisions on. So again, clean audit, no findings, no material journal entries. So kind of gives you a quick overview. We did have kind of two major items that happened during the audit this year. One was we implemented a new GASB pronouncement, GASB 84, for those of you that like the technicality of it. And that, I'm sure Mary Beth has talked to you about throughout the year, but that's where we took the student activity funds. And we took them out of student activity funds, and now they are kind of split amongst different funds in the district. I know some went to the general fund, some went to childcare, and then there's a new fund that was created that's called the student slash, let me get the official name here. It's on, if you ever want to look it up in your copy, it's on page 74 through 79. But the student slash school activity fund, and that has now become a special revenue fund as compared to trust and agency accounts. You do have budgets that you approve for that every year. That was something that was implemented during the year, and obviously, we've had the effect of COVID not only on the district, but also on the audit, and a lot of uncertainty as to state revenues and budgeting, and how the CARES funding kind of will impact the district going forward. So we do have a footnote in the financial statement on page, I don't know if you can get there. Page 62, footnote M, and that does kind of talk about COVID and some of the dollars that were received to the district in July and August through the state aid status report, those will not be recognized as income until 2021. So for Clarkston, that was over $3 million that was received. So just to let all of you kind of aware of that. And then I'll just kind of briefly go over some of the highlights beyond those two things that happened. If you want to move forward to the next page there. So this is the statement of activities. This is the long-term view of the district as well. This would be very similar to like a for-profit income statement, if you're used to looking at that. And it takes all of the activities of the district, including all of the funds, all your capital assets, all your long-term debt, pension, OPEB, and combines it in these statements. Only thing that to really just highlight is that on a very long-term basis, the district did decrease its total net position by about $10 million, $10.7 million. And a big part of that, almost all of it is due to the change in the pension liability and the change of the net OPEB liability. So while those liabilities, we've talked about this year after year, but just as a reminder, that is the district's portion of the state retirement plan that they now are required to put on their book. But we also have to put the expense on there as well. So that is what is attributing to that negative change in net position and the negative net position overall. Kind of moving forward. This is one of my favorite graphs, and this is the fund balance five-year trend. So Clarkston was able to increase the fund balance about $1.5 million to a total fund balance of $10,702,000. So very exciting. It represents 11.51% of the district's 2021 budgeted expenditures. I just point that out because Mary Beth may have been, have given you different information if she's been comparing it to the 1920s information. We look at it against what you're going to spend in the future. You, as a board, have a goal of maintaining a 9% fund balance, and this allows you to help avoid having to do short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes. And last year, your fund balance percentage was just over 10% at 10.06%. So very good that you were able to add to fund balance. For those of you that do have paper statements, I apologize, we don't have this on the slide, but there's some highlights of it. On page 23 is the general fund budget to actual statement. So just a couple of things I wanted to highlight there. This kind of goes through what you had planned to spend, but actually spent, what your variance is. On the revenue side, you know, you had planned to spend about $93.7 million, or receive, excuse me, and you only received $92.2. The majority of that being in state revenue, which was so unknown at the time you guys were required to do your June budget. So there is almost a $1.5 million variance, but that is only 1.6%. So I kind of wanted to, sometimes we look at large numbers and they look a little shocking, but if you look at it on a percentage basis, 1.6% out of $93 million is great. Kind of moving down to expenditures, you had planned to spend almost $92.4 million, but were able to control your costs and just spend over $91 million. So you had a positive variance there. So while you received less revenue from the state than you had anticipated, you were able to spend less than you had planned as well. So that helped attribute to your increase of fund balance of about $1.5 million. So kind of backing up to that expenditure variance, that's about a 1.46%. The state often uses about a 5% guideline, and so you, as a district, are well within that 5% there. So very good, especially with, given all of the uncertainty. You know, that's a very good budget, a very good control of cost. And part of it helps because you were able to kind of stop a lot of spending and control that. So as a district, you guys did a very good job there. Kind of moving on, we'll just kind of touch on the next slides just very quickly. This is the general fund budget to actual in a graph and then in a table form. We've kind of already gone over this, but just so you can see it there. You continue on to the next couple of slides. Again, these are just your expenditures broken out by different areas, instruction, added needs, and the like, and kind of compare from one year to the next. Some people find that helpful. Your spending was very consistent from year to year, which is, which is pretty typical. The next page is the revenue by category as well. Again, fairly typical from one year to the next. And then the last two pages are just suggestions and recommendations that come from us. Again, these are not findings, this is, these are not meant to be criticism, these are things to take into consideration as you guys plan ahead. Again, encouraging and supporting the business office, it has been a rough, it's been a rough year overall, but it has been a rough year for finance people in supporting them. Internal controls in a remote environment, and when you're dealing with global pandemics, becomes even more important. And you, as a district, were able to still maintain your controls, which is, which is great. Those are one of the things that we kind of look at. A couple of other things, we talk about GASB 84 in there and how we did have some changes to the beginning balances due to some restatement, but just due to that accounting pronouncement we talked about. The, I guess it's the fourth bullet down, talks about the CARES Act. So we chatted about that just briefly, and that the district has received $3.1 million. That was what was received in July and August. And Mary Beth would know if there's been more since then that will be recognized in the 2021 year. And just one thing to note, a lot of, the CARES Act money is federal. And so it is very likely that it will increase the amount of programs that will need to be audited from a federal perspective. So the other financial statement that you received is what we call the Sifa, the Schedule of Federal Expenditures, Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And there's a whole financial statement that is just for the federal programs. We test not only the internal controls and we test the compliance of whatever program is chosen. This year is especially important that you received no findings in that environment as well, because it helps you maintain your low-risk status. And as we have to add more programs going forward, or potentially add more programs going forward, that low-risk status means we only need a lower threshold of coverage. So just alerting the board that, you know, the saying that most things in life aren't free. You know, when you receive that federal funding, there's some audit requirements that are attached to that, so that will mean more work. The challenge that has come from all of this federal funding is that there's been very limited guidance, not only to the district, but also to the auditors. The federal government has put out no guidance as to the compliance requirements surrounding that. So that has been very difficult, and there's been a lot of questions and a lot of unknown about that. So Mary Beth and her staff do a great job. Obviously, we are sad to see Heather go, and I know that Mary Beth has a new individual hired. But they do a great job of, of just keeping track of all of the tiny details and keeping controls in place and documentation. And in a year like this, it's been especially difficult for a lot of business offices around the state, and your district has handled that very well. So kudos to all of you for that. And then just lastly, the last page. This is just letting the board know that there are some upcoming pronouncements that could affect your financial statements. The biggest one really is leases. In the past, we've had what's called a capital lease or an operating lease, and depending on what type it was, it determined how it was recorded. Going forward, all leases will be recorded both on the balance sheet and on the income statement. So that, that will just kind of be a change going forward and just letting you know that if you, if you hear that kind of coming up there, we're aware of it, and we'll be starting to work with your business office to kind of see how that directly impacts Clarkston as a district. That is, I kind of talked fairly quickly, kind of went through the highlights of things. Are there any questions I can help answer for anyone?
Trustees, Egan?
The last few slides that you showed us with the graphs? I don't see them in this report, and are they available, like, online somewhere for us to see?
Oh, in the, in the audit summary that the copy you received, they're not in there?
Oh, I'm looking at the paper copy, I'm sorry. So the paper copy is not the same as what we received electronically?
It should be. So if not, I will make sure that you get the paper copy. It was emailed and it was sent in paper, so.
I know that this presentation was, what we just saw was shared with us probably last Thursday or so? Thursday or Friday?
Yeah, that's what I missed.
Yeah.
So it's just not in here, that's all.
So I don't know. I mean, I'm just looking at this for, the hard copy for the first time. I mean, other than what I read over the weekend, but I know the slides we would have, we would have seen them last Thursday-ish.
They're in the board packet, yes.
Yeah, and in the board packet.
It is in the packet, okay.
Yeah. Toward the, toward the end, I think, under the action item.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? And I know we have a couple of trustees attending remotely, so. I just want to say how much I appreciate the format of the report every single year. I mean, I do take the time to read it and the narrative that's in there, especially on some of those complicated issues, is always incredibly helpful to me to remind me sort of year after year about these issues that we're dealing with. So thank you so very much. I mean, from the management discussion that I know Ms. Rogers helps, helps produce to, you know, just the lengthy explanations for all of those really complicated sort of financial issues and tasks that are involved in, in the running of the district. So I just want to thank you so much for all of the time it takes to put together such a complicated report that I think it does help all of us understand it and get reminded of it year after year. So I do appreciate that.
I'm glad it's helpful for you.
Other comments or questions from the board? So Ms. Robyn, I know we will be approving this audit later tonight, and while, I know I don't think we need the full workshop presentation again when we get there, but I would like to call on you again, maybe just to give, I mean, just real overview highlights for our public. So if there may be three-ish, three to five high points that you would like our public to take away from the audit, if you could be thinking of that and be able to give that
Absolutely.
highlight for members of our public before we actually take that vote in just a little bit of time for me, I sure would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments from trustees, how about we take about just a five-minute recess, and then I will call us back to order, and we will get on with our business meetings. So we are in recess. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Rowe, may I have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Mrs. Crane?
Here.
Mrs. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Catalina?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Hire?
Here.
Mr. Need?
Here.
And Mrs. Horst?
Here. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is time for public participation as indicated on the agenda in items three and nine. Item two is approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item three is citizens' request to address the board. Under item three, you are given two opportunities to address the board. Under item 3.1, you can request to address the board about any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Under item nine, you are welcome to address the board on any topic. When making comments, please state your name, and then direct your comments to Mrs. Kelly Horst, President, Clarkston Board of Education. Mrs. Rowe has put tonight's agenda up on your screen for those of you attending our meeting via Zoom. And so I will, as we have done in the past, take a look and give you a moment for our attendees to see if there is anyone attending tonight that would like to, let me know right now if they wish to address the board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Now is the time to indicate your interest in doing that. So attendees, remember that what you do is you click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen, and then the wave hand, raise hand, wave hand, raise hand feature, and then we can call on you and determine which item it is that you wish to address the board. Could you go back to the agenda for a second, please? Thank you so much. Just give everyone one more chance to look at the agenda. Okay, all right. Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda, but attendees, when we get to item nine, obviously, there will be another chance for you to address the board at that time. Item four is superintendent update. I will turn it over to Dr. Ryan.
Thank you, President Horst. On behalf of our school district, and I think I speak for our Board of Education as well this evening, as we speak to our community, to our families, to our kids, and our staff. And I want to report that over the last several weeks, as we've had a return to face-to-face full learning in our elementary, in our hybrid, in our secondary. It's not been easy necessarily in the transition, but I've seen an amazing amount of fortitude, perseverance. I've seen a lot of joy with our students coming back in the buildings. I've seen the joy of seeing human beings, although different than we remember how it was before, but less focus on that and more focus on the interaction of what we have and not what we don't have. I've seen teachers and staff members and administrators come together. I see them untangle roadblocks and look at new ways of doing things. I see positive energy and a willingness to take things by the horns and make it happen. I've seen dialogue, I've seen suggestions, I've seen engagement at every level. And as your superintendent, I just can't say enough of how proud I am of Clarkston schools, our students, our families, and absolutely our staff of the way that they've made this transition work. And I think that long-term, looking back at this time, I'm never gonna forget the way that our staff and students have shown grace, and very much in a way of making the best out of any situation. And I want to continue to support that on behalf of our team up here and within the school district as a whole, that no matter what we face or how things continue to turn and twist over the next year, that we're gonna take it on together. We're gonna take it on with the same grit and focus and perseverance that we showed so far. And I don't see anybody backing down when it comes to doing the right thing by the people and our community and by our staff, and continuing to press forward. This period of COVID, which seems to be on every conversation at some level that I have day in, day out, seven days a week, will pass. I look forward to the day when we look back and remember what we did really to survive this as a community and as a world, but at least in Clarkston. I know we're gonna look back thinking, not only we did the best we could, but we did it with style, we did it with smiles, and we did it with each other. So I just want to thank our community, everyone, staff, teachers, families, for hanging in there thus far. And although I have update later this evening, obviously, the ride is not over yet, but we're gonna continue to plug away, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ryan. And we'll certainly move right into that presentation. Item five is our presentation items, and you are up to bat here as well with our Fall 2020 update.
Thank you, President Horst. Obviously, now focusing in on reviewing our current state of learning in Clarkston and following the data as we have, and also our program as it has kind of adjusted throughout this long, winding road. Tonight, I have another chapter to share of direction of where we're heading and where we've been. And obviously, with that return to face-to-face, we continue to evaluate from week to week the progress of COVID. As I've said in those concentric rings, and I'll keep saying them again, as I work with epidemiologists, they've examined data and looked at what's going on in Clarkston proper, our town, our community, and all the homes literally that encompass the school district, and then also evaluating that next ring of communities surrounding us, our county, and our state overall. And it's no secret, as far as progression of the virus, is one facet of our evaluation for our learning stance or modality, but also how our district and our protocols and precautions and how they're working play into the overall big picture. As does looking into the future, how we can continue to provide the best program in any atmosphere, in any challenge for our community as a whole. So looking at the effectiveness of our current learning piece. And I'll break those into those three parts and then offer my recommendation for our near-term continuation of where we're at, and then look at some of the big items I'm looking into the future as we move forward. So it's no secret, if you follow any news or data or any, any site in terms of the progression of COVID in our country, the largest concentric ring, or actually the world would be, but albeit either one of those, infection rates are increasing across the United States, and Michigan has picked up. And we've followed that all the way down through those concentric rings that good old Clarkston, as far as our place within Oakland County, has also increased. As I referred to and shared in my weekly report, we've increased from an average of 15 cases per 10,000 last week to a number of 27.7 cases per 10,000. That marks the third successive week of increased progression of the number of cases that we've had in our area. Along that line, we're sitting roughly at a percent positivity over the last week of 4.71%. Again, as you approach five and go higher, it starts to be in concern of looking at the overall progression, and that trend is extremely important. Along the trend, also with the virus, has been broken down in looking at the specific demographics of how that infection has progressed in different age groups. specific demographics of how that, uh, infection has progressed, uh, in different age groups. Um, silver lining within this, within the state, within the county, and within Clarkston, looking at the specific rate increases of our school-aged children, between five and thirteen years old, which encompasses two separate demographics, the rates have been stable as other increases have occurred. And I think it's important to know in talking with our epidemiologists, the most severely affected in terms of current increases in cases has been in the thirty, forty-year-old and older, noting their behaviors and what's going on in our community as far as transference and infection rates. And that, uh, obviously is concerning, especially as we look at the virus follows a fairly typical trend. It does not jump around from week to week, high to low. It follows a progression up, down, and stable. And now three weeks of progression, that's concerning on the front that if it continues to progress, um, we'll have an increased overall relative infection rate in our community, which immediately then obviously affects our schools. Our schools are, uh, very much connected to our community in two ways, obviously. One is absolute safety in terms of that ability that virus to transfer itself into school. And the more cases that are out there, the more likely that we could have individuals come in contact with each other that are infected. And secondly, the continuity of school peace. Uh, for every individual that is infected, we have to do protocols that involve quarantining and separating students and staff from school, which, when it takes a larger proportion of potential students and staff, can be very disruptive to the overall school and learning process. So those are very important functions as we follow the progression of the virus itself. Related to that, though, is how the protocols of our school district are working in terms of being able to mitigate the progression of the virus. So on one hand, I want our community and our staff and students who are listening in tonight to see that we're monitoring on one hand, uh, the increased progression of the virus itself, but we're also looking at how that, uh, infection rate, uh, influences and impacted our schools directly. And I can tell you the protocols and procedures that we've instituted within Clarkston schools now for three weeks in our elementary, and just finished our second week of hybrid learning in our secondary, that at this point, from our health department, we have zero documented cases transferring within our schools. That's an important data piece to share with all of our stakeholders to know that the mask wearing, the hand washing, the distancing that we're putting between our staff and students, and our cleaning regimens are deemed effective so far by our health department. We're doing a good job. Knowing that we're dealing with little human beings in a very large school district, it's important to note that we do the best we can to implement these cleaning and other protocols, but the effectiveness has to be proved positive in itself in terms of how effective they are. Ability tonight to report that zero, zero's a powerful number when it comes to reporting that transference in school, because we've had cases. Currently, we have seventeen cases in the district. All of them have not been contract, contact traced to an origin within the school district. So the infection is out there in our community, but at this point, as a school district, we're identifying it, uh, either through direct testing and cooperation with our families or staff members, and we're taking the appropriate precautions in terms of the quarantining. Thus far, if you look at the entire quarantining, uh, within the school district, we're in to a position to where, um, it has taken somewhat of a disruptive pattern. If you looked at the hundred and twenty-eight individuals that we had to put in quarantine, but on the scale of looking at a school district of over seven thousand students, uh, we're still at, uh, fighting strength and, and not in overly disruptive pattern for our overall learning, day-to-day operations. Obviously, these protocols will continue to be utilized, and we have to look at, uh, other school districts in terms of their utilization of these protocols also finding similar effect. In other words, uh, what we've done and managed to mitigate, uh, the transmission of COVID at our schools has been replicated in Oakland County, North Oakland County, and through several studies throughout the United States showing that, um, schools went properly using protocols and procedures are not considered a major spread for COVID. And, uh, to me, the proof positive is that first three weeks of data. Now, obviously, in the face of increasing, uh, virus, uh, activity in those concentric rings, how does it impact? And that's honestly, in looking at our community, uh, this evening, that's the crux that I'm working day by day and week by week with our, um, public health department in Oakland County. You know, to me, the progression has been such that there's going to be a point where because of contact tracing and quarantining, that we will have disruptions in school if the virus continues to pro- progress in an upward mo- uh, area, upward way. And I think that if we look at the overall, um, safety right now, the message from the pub- public health department is, your schools are the safest place to be. And obviously, the protocols that we utilize day-to-day in a school setting are not very often replicated, nor would I expect them to be in the average household in Clarkston. We're not maintaining social distance in our immediate friend circles or what I see in our, in our family units. But there is an opportunity for our community to help stamp out the progress of COVID in a larger extent of how we interact with each other as a larger community. Your larger friend groups, your sports friends, your activity friends, um, people that you associate with in a very, in a way that, um, could propagate or support the spread of the virus. As I said at the beginning, your school district is part of the community. We're going to be influenced by the behaviors and activities of everyone outside these walls and within our community, and I will continue to ask our community to please help us maintain our face-to-face learning by acting responsible and engaging in ways that limit or stop the progress of COVID in our community. That message has to be said again and again as far as what this presentation represents. Uh, because as I look forward, you know, my hope is, although with these increased rates, I cannot, I cannot recommend that we bring all of our students back into the hallways of the middle school, junior high and high school. Our secondary buildings represent unique challenges in terms of number of students present. And although I think that our hybrid model, as far as the programming goes, is not ideal, it's not ideal for our teachers, our students. It was meant to be a transition between, um, distance learning and full face-to-face. Right now, looking at that higher numbers of virus activity in the area, and even though that our protocols are working, I don't feel like it's a prudent move to test those protocols by trying to maximize, um, the social groupings within our secondary buildings. I do believe, though, that we're in a position also not to step backwards. I believe that although the virus is increasing, it needs to be continually monitored, again in cooperation with our health department, but if our protocols are successful and continue to be successful and week in, week out, as we continue to monitor, I see no reason to recommend to our school board or community that we go immediately back and run towards, uh, distance learning. Obviously, that can change of, in the upcoming weeks, but I think we're in a progression right now that we're within a, you know, two weeks or longer, three weeks, maybe, maybe even longer than that, before we have to seriously consider a recommendation to change our learning modality. Uh, it's my hope that we can continue for the foreseeable future and not have to go back or even examine it. Uh, if we do, we would do it in a very thoughtful way as we entered school. It wouldn't be an all-or-nothing type of proposition, but as it is now right now, with our protocols working, I think we can hold tight. And although the proposition of expanding what we've currently done, uh, to be more in terms of the secondary, I don't believe in my mind is on the table right now. As soon as that virus rate stabilizes and begins to decrease, I will be fully ready as quickly as possible to then enter, uh, our secondary students in a way that I think that can be safely done. Again, with the big assumption that we continue to be effective in terms of those protocols. We need to make sure that we don't get, uh, lackadaisical or, or cut corners when it comes to the safety protocols that are occurring in school. We need to maintain those because they're the lifeblood of being able to protect our staff and students while they're in our buildings. So that's going to be an important factor. Another factor is the contact tracing itself, as the potential for increased virus activity happens in our community. It will potentially strain the resources and ability of our community in terms of our, um, public health department to be able to contact trace and effectively provide the schools with information so that we can quarantine and take the nec- necessary steps to keep our staff and students safe. Right now, uh, our average turnaround time when we receive information that we have a person that tested positive is within six hours right now with our health department. We've been labeled priority number one for our, our entire county, and that's all school districts that are currently engaged face-to-face. That means that a public health official trained in contact tracing begins an investigation to track down where that individual was so they can inform and protect other individuals and also track if anybody else needs to be quarantined or separated. Um, it's a very intense job. We, we fully cooperate with our health department in this respect, and if they lose that ability to be able to effectively contact trace because of volume in the future, that would obviously, to me, represent an immediate, uh, red flag alarm in terms of our ability to continue to conduct school face-to-face. So you see, it's, it's a number of factors when you look at our ability of our public health department to support us, the overall progression of the virus over the upcoming weeks, our ability to conduct school effectively in terms of quarantining and continuity of school, and also being able to offer a program of integrity that, um, our students are still learning. And now, obviously, that's a cornerstone of everything that we're doing here. So when you, when you sum it up right now, I'm discouraged by the overall progress of the virus within the concentric, uh, rings. I am encouraged by how well the protocols are working to keep individuals and the virus from train, being transmitted within our school, and I'm guardedly optimistic that we can maintain our current learning format if we continue to be successful in keeping the virus outside our school and being transmitted, and that hopefully, in the upcoming weeks, that number and that rate of virus, um, stabilizes and then becomes, uh, again, on the decrease in our, uh, our county and within those rings. I'm also hopeful long-term, as I hear and follow, and not knowing exactly, because, uh, obviously the timetable has changed several times, is the actual, um, finalizing of a vaccine. That will then be a major, uh, turn in terms of our overall response, um, to this virus. So although I did not really want to stay right now, I'm very happy with the way we're progressing in our elementary program, and I feel like there's tremendous amount of value added from the buildings and, and teachers that I've talked to having our students face-to-face, and I'm very excited that we can continue to do that. Uh, I'm also then concerned as far as that hybrid in the secondary and working with our secondary teachers and administrators to continue to refine it in the interim. Again, it was never designed, I know our Board of Education, the community can think way back to May, when I made recommendations that I was not excited about the long-term, uh, use of hybrids. It absolutely was the right decision to do as a stepping stone to bring everybody back because it was important for our secondary buildings to be able to lock down those protocols in the hallways and lunches without every student in the building there. Plus, I wanted to see the overall, how our students responded within that modality, uh, looking at how we can keep our protocols at a high level. So all that being said, um, I think we can count on this week, next week, as we continue to follow the progression, uh, as long as nothing, um, dramatic happens in terms of that continued increase, and also that I'm not confronted with, uh, a string or now any kind of, uh, measurable, uh, transference of the virus within our buildings, uh, I'm, I'm feeling very strong that we'll be able to kind of continue in our current, uh, modality. If that changes this week or next week or the week after, I'll be here to share it with our community and board in my weekly, uh, communications as far as our decision meter, where we're leaning, that, that recommendation would come to the Board of Education. And I'm hopeful, and I see no reason of how we've handled things thus far, that if we ever did have to change modalities, that it would be done in a shocking or overnight-type way. I very much visualize that, based on our following of these numbers, that if we think, see things that are concerning, that we would begin that transition over a period of weeks, um, to move, if we have to move. So I want to give the confidence to our community and to our teaching staff is that it's not going to be an overnight decision or emergency-type, uh, in my mind. Now, there's always the opportunity, something crazy could happen in terms of predictability. So I, in this epidemic, uh, pandemic, I've learned, uh, to never say never, uh, but I think the most likely route is for the hopefully foreseeable future that we'll be able to maintain where we're currently at, but there is the opportunity, if we did transfer, that we would do it over a period of weeks. So I just want to reiterate that and give the community at least some of the bigger ideas and the things I'm, that I'm looking at, uh, within my two to three meetings per week with our health department. So I want to thank, um, Heidi McLean, uh, who's our, uh, chief coordinator for COVID. She manages all those different quarantining operations. It's literally a twenty-four-hour day, seven-day operation with our administrators and our principals and our central office staff, uh, staying ahead of this right now. Uh, but it's, it's one that we're not going to get lax on or, um, sidestep. We, we take it right now as a twenty-four-hour, seven-day commitment, and it's a commitment that we want to provide the best safe environment for our staff and students and as best as we can maintain that face-to-face environment, uh, over the next period. So that kind of summarizes it kind of in a nutshell, and I, and if it seems like it's a lot of information and it, it strings together a lot of different, uh, pieces, uh, that would be true. Uh, and that's the only way to tell the story. It all kind of fits together as a larger puzzle. So I would take any questions by our Board of Education right now, but the, again, our recommendation right now is to stay, stay put where we are currently and current, and keep monitoring moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Uh, you know, the decision meter comes out Friday, and I really like the graphic, and I think I've been hearing a lot of positive, um, feedback from our community and, and my friends in my circles about it, that it's a great graphic representation of your thinking. But I think clearly tonight you have conveyed, uh, in a very transparent, in a very deep way, all of the thinking that goes into what's a nice, concise, colorful, easy to, easy to absorb graphic. And, uh, as all of you saw, if you looked at it Friday, it, it took a step backwards. And I'm sure Mrs. Rowe had something to do with that, showing how it went from here to here, you know, in a, in a negative way. But I think you have shown all of us, you've certainly shown the board, and I think you've proven to the community time and time again that you are going to be very thoughtful about this, very thorough, and very upfront with our community. So I certainly appreciate the depth of, of what you shared tonight, and, uh, I, I know you are continuing to monitor this on many, many fronts, and I, I hope that our community and certainly those attending tonight and those that will watch this later are reassured that, that this is a long game for you and, and that you are watching this on many, many levels. So I just wanted to say that, and now I will certainly, um, turn it over to any, any of our trustees who have comments or questions or reflections. And I see Mrs. McGinnis. President Horst. We'll start with you.
Um, Mr. Um, Mr. Ryan, I, the one thing I'm kind of looking at as a barometer, along with all the things you've already spoken about, is the amount of contact our community is having with the superintendent and the Board of Education. Um, this is not something that we all went to training for, got our certification on. This is all something all very new to us, and while I thoroughly respect the input and thoughts that our community has cr- uh, transmitted to us regarding their concerns, both whether it be virtual or in person, it's evident to me with the reduction of the communications from our community that it's working for them too. So, um, I think that a, a, another barometer is, um, an increased concern from our community is also an alert, at least on my part, that something's not working, at least for the community. So while we here in the district may have a barometer of metrics to, to monitor, one of those metrics, I believe, is our community's concern and/or satisfaction with what we have done to date. And through this learning process, those concerns from our community have been greatly diminished. Um, I'm not saying that I, that I'm not asking them to communicate to us, but their concerns regarding the actions that we've taken have diminished, and that tells me that we're doing the right thing by our community and our students and our staff. And so I greatly appreciate everything the administration and, um, the Superintendent Ryan has done to bring a plan together that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. In response, um, Mrs. McGinnis, at the end of this week, beginning of next week, we're, we're hoping to have it very soon, is a collective survey to really, um, get some feedback from our students, from our families and from our staff, both in terms of their recollections and feelings, how they were able to develop the distance learning, where they, where they are as far as their overall maturing of that, uh, utilization, and also so far in our face-to-face, uh, what the high and low points have been and where the, not only satisfaction, but the feeling of comfort, uh, from all three, and how can we continue to kind of grow in that? Because to say that we have it all figured out today or yesterday or next week, I think would be foolish, and I think we can glean a lot. But the issue a lot of times is that you can't unfold something and then immediately ask somebody, "How do you feel about it?" You know, because the reality is, you know, our teachers need two or three weeks as our students and families in any of these different learning formats to really gauge how it's working and how it's not working. And I include also our virtual, our continued, uh, students that are in our virtual program as well. We want to continue to grow and improve in those areas, uh, so in the upcoming weeks, we'll be able to share with our community, our Board of Education, kind of some more metrics, uh, on that level of satisfaction or lack of. To me, if it's not working well, there, to me, there's no shame in that. It's something that we need to bring to right light, address it, um, find ways to do better, and then move forward.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Ryan? Okay, thank you so much. Seeing none, we will move on to action items. Six point one is approval of- 6.1 is approval of personnel changes. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the personnel changes listed on the attached sheets as presented.
Support. And Mr. Lucido has some of our new staff with us today and would like to introduce them. Mr. Lucido.
Yes, we have two new administrators here with us this evening. I'd like to introduce to the board and have them come up and say a few words. Jared Berkley is our new accounting supervisor, and then Wendy Osterman, she is our new administrator of data structure and analysis.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Ryan, I just want to extend my gratitude for this wonderful opportunity, and I'm just really looking forward to joining the Clarkston team. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Clearly, you're joining a very high-functioning team, as you heard tonight from our audit, so high expectations and keep the ship running tightly. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I just want to say that I am so excited to be back with my Clarkston family. It was an honor to be hired 16 years ago as a teacher, and it is an honor to be hired as an administrator. This time around, though, I know how great Clarkston is, and I am just so happy that I get to be part of that again, and I look forward to supporting everyone and learning and growing with everyone. So thank you.
I knew the name would sound familiar.
That's right. We are so thrilled to have you back, Ms. Osterman. Thank you so much. You're going to have to come up with a new signature for your email. I think she used to sign her emails, yours in math. She was one of my son's teachers, and so it always used to say, "Yours in math." So maybe we're going to have to, "Yours in data." We're going to have to update that signature. Welcome. Welcome to both of you. We're thrilled to have you, as everyone else who is on this personnel sheet. I know it's been a struggle for our staff, who have worked many hours of overtime, and so I'm glad to be giving everyone some relief in getting up to full staff here. I know our people in our buildings are going to be happy with that as well. I don't think we voted. We didn't vote. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? See, I get off track. We get excited, I get off track. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.2 is approval of our extended COVID-19 learning plan. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the district's extended COVID-19 learning plan as presented.
Support. Trustees, remember, this is the state-required learning plan that we must now approve every 30 days. So we approved it initially 30 days ago. We're seeing it now again for the first time. Mrs. Mahoney presented it to us, and now you're seeing it with a couple of updates in red in the plan. I think acknowledging the fact that we have now returned to face-to-face learning in many instances and that our initial round of testing is underway. Are there any questions or any discussion related to this that Mrs. Mahoney can address? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.3 is approval of the resolution regarding the Open Meetings Act. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the resolution regarding changes to the Open Meetings Act as presented.
Mr. Need attended an MASB workshop on this recently, so I don't know if he wants to offer just a couple of words on this and the law that's coming that actually will change. This is sort of, I think, to be kind of a temporary measure until full policy and law take effect.
Sure, yeah. The legislature quickly adopted some amendments to the Open Meetings Act following the Supreme Court decision that invalidated some of the governor's executive orders that dealt with remote meetings. Under the amended law, which the governor quickly signed, any public body can continue to have remote meetings for any purpose through the end of this year. Next year, remote meetings are only allowed under certain specified circumstances, including military, individual being absent due to military commitments, health reasons, and under a state of emergency. In 2022, remote meetings are only going to be allowed for military service. Our MASB governmental relations liaison indicated that they are going to attempt, along with the other interest groups for public bodies, to get some amendments during the lame duck session, but they were not sure how successful that would be. The MASB resolution, the Neola resolution that we have, will incorporate the requirements of the new law and allow us to, again, continue to meet remotely for the rest of the year.
Any questions, Mrs. McGinnis?
Mr. Need, am I correct that this does not prohibit us from allowing community remote participation at any point in time?
At this time, it does not prohibit remote community participation. There is a question after 2020, what will be allowed, and that's, hopefully, we will get some guidance on that before the new year.
And I think probably a good question for our policy group would be to check with Neola and see if they're moving quickly on this, and if not, we may have to do some investigating of our own. I'm sure every district is thinking the same thing.
Well, my concern would be, I'm not saying I'm against it, my concern would be is that should a community member choose to participate and address the board during a remote session, that that would be considered under the Open Meetings Act after 12/31/20. And I would beg to our legislators to not prohibit community participation at any time virtually, no matter what the Board of Education is doing, to partake in a public meeting. And so I think we have enjoyed a great increase in community participation in our meetings, both verbally addressing the board and witnessing the actions of the board in public. And I would hate to have the changes in the Open Meeting Act prohibit our community from seeing and having ease and access to the transparency of the Board of Education.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
Yeah, I agree 100%, Mrs. McGinnis, and I deal with this in my day job, so it's my belief that the public can still participate remotely, as long as they have the opportunity to attend in person, that they should be allowed, because that clearly is within the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. But again, there is a little bit of uncertainty there, and hopefully it'll be clarified, and I agree with your suggestion.
And I'll remind our public that we are open for business, right? I mean, we are, at the moment, allowing up to 30 people under the current law to attend in person, so for all of those who are watching tonight, we're certainly grateful, and I agree, it's been fun to have so much participation over the past couple of months, but we certainly have space for you here in the boardroom as well. But, so could I ask as well, for the policy committee, Ms. Crane, could you sort of put that on high alert?
Yes.
I mean, we have three meetings, I believe, for the rest of the year, so could you investigate that with Neola and get back to me and let me know if they're intending to make this a formal policy issue, and I think we'll continue to push it with MASB and...
I will reach out to our contact at Neola this week and hopefully before our next meeting.
Okay.
I will know the answer.
Okay. Great. Right. Other questions, comments from the board? All right, Mrs. Rowe, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Hire?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
And Mrs. Egan? I mean, Mrs. Horst. Yes. The motion carries. Item 6.4 is approval of purchase of control room equipment for the ITV Video Center. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the purchase of the ITV Video Control Room Upgrade Key Code Media for a total of $28,969 as presented.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board? And I see that this is approved by both entities, both us and the township. Do we know, Mr. Merkin, I see you're in the back of the room, has this already been approved by the township, or are we approving it first?
The Video Center Board actually approves this.
Oh, the Video Center Board?
And then the Video Center Board recommends it to the school board from a purchasing standpoint. It's above our district purchasing limit, and since the district is the fiduciary agent of ITV, we have to, as the school board, approve this so the district can actually buy it.
Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you then. I misread it. Thank you. All right. Seeing none other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.5 is approval of the HVAC bulletin for Clarkston High School. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the construction change order in Bulletin 21 at Clarkston High School to Conti LLC in the amount of $116,179 as presented.
Support. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.6 is approval of playground upgrades proposal. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the playground improvements at our elementary schools and early childhood center to Miracle Recreation and Midstates Recreation in the amount not to exceed $264,106.
Questions or discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.7 is approval of the 2019-2020 audit. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the audit for June 30th, 2020 as presented.
Before we vote, I'm going to ask our partner at Hungerford Nichols, Ms. Adrienne Schrauben, to just give our public a few minutes of overview, so for those who did not attend our workshop earlier tonight, so everyone is up to speed on the state of the audit.
Great, thank you. As you indicated, we went over the audit in greater detail ahead of this board meeting, so I'll just give you a few highlights. The first one is Clarkston received an unmodified audit opinion on both the financial audit and the federal audit, and that is the highest opinion that an auditor can give. The district received no findings in either the financial audit or the federal audit, and there were no material journal entries that the auditors had to come in and create. So, great news there. We appreciate the business office and all of their hard work in monitoring and their controls that they have in place, especially over the difficult year that they had. The district was able to increase the general fund balance to $1,525,000, and that represents 11.51% of the budgeted 2021 expenditures. The Board of Education has a goal of maintaining a 9% fund balance, so this percentage is well within the board policy. And that is a very quick overview. We went, as I said, we went into great detail before, but a great overall audit for the district.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you sticking around for our meeting and offering us that overview. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Need?
This is the sixth audit that I've seen as I've been a school board member, and every year we receive the unmodified opinion and then high commendations to Mrs. Rogers and the business office for all their hard work, and our auditors as well.
Thank you.
It's definitely Ms. Rogers and her team that do the hard work. I get to come in and kind of bother them a little bit, but they're great to work with and they do a great job.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor of approving the 2019-2020 audit, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to item seven, report items, and 7.1 is our monthly finance report. And so trustees, if you're following your packet, that is page 159, if you have to scroll ahead, and we will turn it over to Ms. Rogers.
Current monthly financial update as of September 30th, 2020, we're right on track. Budget to actual revenues, just over 11%, with the majority of our revenue is coming in so far has been our local revenue, which is our property tax collection, since we do summer tax collection 100%. State revenue, we haven't really, we don't start receiving that until October, and our first October 20th state aid, as you know, we're always two months behind in receiving our state revenue, so you will start seeing that go up on our next financial update. The federal revenue looks so out of whack, I may have mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned this last time, but it's 121%, and that is because, as you noticed in the state, from our audit, from our auditor and our detail workshop, we have, in our July and August state aid, we received just under $3.2 million in federal COVID relief funding. Under the federal guidance from the state of Michigan and through the auditors, we had to recognize all that revenue in 2020-21. So that's why you see that so out of whack, because that's not in our budget, because we didn't know it when we approved the budget in June, that we were getting this funding. The in-district revenue is mainly receiving our, we submit expenses mainly for the idea funding. We submit that to the ISD, and then they reimburse us, so that's what we've submitted at this point. Budget to actual expenditures, we are at 12%. That's always higher than revenues, basically, because we don't receive our state funding or our federal funding in a timely manner. We usually don't start getting that until October. So the instructional is 11.2%, and the operations is at 18.9%. Our September 30th fund equity at this point is at $9.2 million, and our June 30th audit is $10.45 million. I know the auditor said $10.7 million, but that $10.45 is because there was over $300,000 that we had to assign to the lighting project and bring over to this school year, because it wasn't 100% completed. We only got it about 50% completed, the lighting project, and that got delayed due to the COVID, even though the board approved it to Allhappen in 2019-20. So that is major highlights that I can think of for September 2020. We did receive all of our check registers, purchase card, and ACH transactions, so if we have any questions on anything that happened in September.
Trustees, are there any questions for Ms. Rogers concerning our September financial Thank you very much. Item eight is discussion items. There are none tonight. And finally, we get to item nine, citizen comments. Citizens are welcome to address the board on any topic at this point on the agenda. So citizens, if you are interested in addressing the board, now is the time to indicate your interest by going to the participants button at the bottom of your screen and clicking on the raise hand feature. We'll give you just a moment to do that, and then we will just go down the list. You have approximately two minutes to address the board on any topic. I'm not seeing any citizens who wish to address the board tonight, so we will move on to item 10, information items. Our next Board of Education meeting is Monday, November 9. At this point, it will begin at 7:00 PM, in person with our Zoom link for public participation. Item 11 is adjournment. May I have a motion, please?
Move to adjourn.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.